I'm Tyler McNally, I'm a junior at Demby High School. The Young Adult Police Commission helps us build relationships with police officers. We learn from them and they learn from us. YPC allows us to have a voice and opinions on topics that we discuss about current driver and fatal vision goggles to understand the consequences of texting and drinking while driving. We participated in drone flying and practice interviewing skills with the N and Police Department. As community helpers, we assisted at the Martin Luther King Day food drive, assisted with the Christmas for the children with Dr. Cherry, and giving back to the community clothing and toy drive. A YPC student is given the opportunity to speak at the Newport News Police Department Basic Telecommunication Academy graduation, basic law enforcement graduations and police promotion ceremonies. I had the opportunity to be a guest speaker. This opportunity allows us to bridge the gap between police stereotype and the youth in the community.
A co-Vice President for YPC.
You can, you can move the mic down, it's fine. There you go.
The years I have served with YPC has served a deep connection and bond between myself and the officers of the Newport News Police Department, especially Chief Drew, Lieutenant Allen, Chief Creswell, and all the commitment to protecting and serving our community. It was through this bond that I developed a love for YPC and a desire to see more officers actively involved in our neighborhoods. The Newport News Police Department officers and civilians meet with the YPC students every Wednesday. We have open conversations of expectation. I hope and pray that the officers will continue to make a positive impact on our community, and I am forever grateful for the positive impact you, they all have had on our.
I know we have a lot of speakers, so just page into the, uh, the clock and the city clerk.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm Michael Massey, I represent Alvin Keels, who's the managing partner in this property. He's with Fort Houston Investment Properties. He seeks the ordinance to build a hundred and twenty apartments on that property. When he initially hired me for this property, for this project, I asked him to look at the city's comprehensive plan to see what he wanted to. We realized that what he did want to do was in fact consistent with one city, one future, 2040, the comprehensive plan of the city. So that's why I advised him to proceed with the project. Commercial development is very difficult, is a very difficult endeavor to get in line. A number of projects, almost all of his, his big projects that he has endeavored to take on, he has proven to me to be an honest person, sophisticated person, reliable person. I think that what he would do for the city would be to make the city very proud. I think the project would be something that you can brag upon, and I think also that it would help. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank, alright, thank you all.
I'm Jack Clodrum, the engineer that he just spoke about. Our, our firm has been working with Alvin for about five years now. We've got multiple projects that are going great. The community seems to really like them. The thing I really wanted to bring up in, in this discussion is, in Planning Commission, there were some concerns about drainage, and I think this area does not drain, Commission, there were some concerns about drainage, and I think this area does not drain well today. What we do is, when we come in, we disent properties, and we channel all that water into a drainage system. Once we capture all that water, we maintain it, manage it, and then let it out slowly and, and through the system. Those small little pockets are not that big a deal to take care of. It's, it's just normal in our course of business to do that. I think that's about all I've got right now, but if anybody's got any questions, I'll be more than happy to, to answer anything I can about this development.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here on behalf of Wood Creek Homeowners Association. I am one of the Board of Directors, and I'm also the treasurer of the association. We just don't like this apartment complex coming so close to the homeowner's property. It's very, very close, it's smack up against them, they can't really enjoy the quiet living that they bought a house to live in there. There're supposed to be a hundred and twenty units. You take those hundred, they opposed it six to two. I think they understand where we are as homeowners. So, we just want you to know that this isn't ideal for our area this time, and we wanted to let you know that. We couldn't have a lot of people come tonight that were homeowners, some are elderly, don't drive at night, others can get a babysitter, but it's something that we need you to consider. These people don't want to move, they bought these houses because this was the area they wanted to live in, and it's quiet, and they enjoy it, and they don't want to move, and they don't want all the traffic. Maybe there'll be a, a light there sometime, but we.
Ms. Broda Young.
I was truly hoping, and I was truly praying that I would be called after that statement that she just made, and this is why they've been privileged for so many years, they think that they own Newport News. They do not own Newport News, Virginia. They cannot allow apartment buildings to be built in other part of Newport News, Virginia, but they think they too good, they can build on Jefferson, it can be, be built also where they live and reside at too. We all have to deal with the rising of people in our community. The world is growing, and we're not just gonna spoon feed them so they can be comfortable and everybody else uncomfortable. We had the opportunity to have it our way because we didn't have people that looked like us to speak. You, you brown, alright? So seven browns, city councilmen up there, y'all gotta make a difference. Y'all gotta show us, it's power in numbers, and we voted for the right people to be in office so that we can have an opportunity that we have been denied for hundreds of years, not this year, 2025, but hundreds of years. Y'all can make history, as the, who's been doing amazing job with development, I take my hat off to y'all, I toot the horn to y'all, but y'all gotta show up, y'all gotta show out on this one. Norfolk State University showed up and showed out with Mr. Vic, gonna be the coach of Norfolk State University. Let Newport News show out, and let Iverson and his team come beelssin' here Newport News for us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Chris Elam, I'm with, I'm an architect with RBA Architects out of Chesapeake, and representing Alvin and, in this development, Fort Houston Investment Partners. I just wanted to take a moment to, to go through, to start with, some of the reasons that multifamily housing is right for this lot. One, as previously mentioned, it, it aligns with the compre designation would allow for, the, the math works out to a hundred fifty units on this particular parcel, but we're actually proposing a hundred and twenty units, so a little bit below what the, what the comprehensive plan, you know, is suggesting. In particular, we're excited by the, the development team's intention to create a really high-quality housing that still is, is affordable, and workforce housing, and, and we really believe in the product that they're putting together, that we've incorporated thus far. We're still very preliminary, obviously, you know, some renderings and, and the site plan, but we feel like there's, there's a number of things, actions that we've taken, design concepts that we've incorporated, that'll help to mitigate some of the concerns
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dawn Moses, and I am a citizen of Hampton Roads. As a citizen of Hampton Roads, I was very, the citizens of Newport News have the opportunity to live comfortable. A hundred and twenty apartment, apartments on the property is doable, just like everyone here has spoken before me has said so. The workforce of, of City of Newport News, thank you.
Your Honor, members of Newport New City Council, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here just to address the developmentist project and the person behind it. Just recently, I took a position over at Fort Houston. So, in taking that position, I was looking for housing on this side of the water, I'm originally from the city of Portsmouth, and I couldn't find anything that I liked near my job. So now I'm forced to commute from downtown Hampton to Fort.
Anton Rikun, apologies if that's the, you know, said it wrong.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, hello, City Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, as, as a gentleman was just speaking, he doesn't like to fight traffic at the gate, at the base. Well, guess what, there's gonna be another traffic jam in this neighborhood because there's going, going to be only a single exit and single entrance for the two hundred cars that they plan to fit in. My wife and I here, we bought our house in 2020, and when we bought it, we thought, hey, we found a gem, because it, it's, it's in a nice, quiet neighborhood, it's surrounded by the trees on one side, and we, also, another point I want to mention is, the apartment complexes usually build up their ground, build it up a little bit, and they slant it inwards for, for the retention ponds, but the outer perimeter of the, of the property still is going to be slanted. I just assume all, all the rainwater that drops on that perimeter will just go straight into my backyard.
My name is Titania Rikun, and I'm here today as a concerned resident of the Wood Creek Neighborhood to express my strong opposition to the rezoning of 628 and 634 Old Fort Houston Boulevard, Newport News. From the start, this protest has lacked transparency. The developers purchased this land in August with specific plans in mind and submitted, submitted it to rezoning without consulting with the community. We only found out about it a week before the first hearing from City Council, Planning Commission. Did they reach out as beforehand to address our concerns? No. We saw them for the first time at the hearing on February 5th, no prior engagement. The development, meanwhile, we can provide, they are deeply concerned about increasing one hundred, one hundred twenty to hundred more cars, worsening an already dangerous traffic situation. The intersection at Fort Houston Boulevard and Jefferson Avenue, it's from the survey, it's ninth dangerous intersection already. Will they make it more dangerous if roads? We're only about that. This development, it's simply too large for this small plot of land, it's six acres I'm talking about, so, especially with only one small exit, so this apart.
Myself, hey, I live right up, develop on it, that's their right. So at first, I wasn't too against it until I looked at the actual detailed plans, and this is why I'm standing before you right now, because I need to be perfectly clear, I don't have an issue with the developer, or even affordable, you know, living. Instead, I have a plan or a problem with the issue or their plan as it relates to public safety. Now to understand what I mean, would it be possible for me to show you two images real quick?
We, we don't do the images, but you can just give them to the city clerk and she'll, she'll give it to us.
Okay.
Just that way it's fair to everyone.
Okay, yeah, so, long story short, this apartment complex is located along one road, that's it, we have one road.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms., Ms. Ann Iverson?
Hi, hi, everybody.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank God for allowing me to be here on this day that my mother passed, and I have, thank you, and I had a niece that just passed not even hours ago. Housing in Newport News matter, people matter. I've been, I am sixty-five years of age, I have, people matter. I've been, I am sixty-five years of age, I have seen higher neighborhoods, middle-class neighborhood, I was one of them. I've been here, thank God. I'm so proud of my son Alan Iverson and his partner, Alvin Keel, who wants to generate affordable housing, which will create jobs for Newport News, Virginia. Let's continue, jobs for Newport News, Virginia. Let's continue to make the people in our town, they matter, and we care about their well-being. We care about their well-being. What's wrong with showing?
Good evening, I guess y'all didn't hear him, he called me by my personal name, DK, so that means that I have a personal connection with a lot of you guys up here, right? And for this opportunity for Mr. Iverson and his partners to come into our community, if it's about two hundred cars being parked, let me tell you, I work in the shipyard and every day they make, to get to work and get home. So if it's about the safety, you guys have given us, uh, and developments, come together, make a plan, and make it happen, right? The concern is about two hundred cars. Well, for us, that's two hundred cars worth of property taxes, more money, revenue coming How you doing today?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I came in with a script, but I'm gonna go off of that, you know, I'm gonna speak from the heart tonight. About twenty-five years ago, Alan Iverson gave me an opportunity, he actually worked, and I started my sports career there, and I branched off. Me and Bubba Chuck, as you guys call him, I call him Bubba Chuck too, we've made millions of dollars through sports and entertainment, millions. You know, we got out of Hampton Roads and we went down separate paths, but it's kind of the same path, same path that Mike took, same path that Antoine Batte took, we all did the same thing, and we decided, I guys have always stood behind him, my community's always stood behind me, you know.
At this time, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Taken. Moved and seconded any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Sorry, just one sec, also, does everyone's iPad still work, or is it a verbal vote?
I don't see anything yet. Make sure.
Okay, I think it's still booting up, let's just do a verbal.
Do the swipe up.
Swipe it up.
Uh, from the bottom, yeah.
Are we good? Okay, is, is all counsel good? Alright, so this is.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Mall.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Ealing.
Four.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you, so at this time, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
That's to close the public hearing, so, motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Is moved and seconded, at this time, is there any discussion? I know we have discussion, we'll start, we'll start with the people whose district's in the North District, so we'll start with those two first, whichever order, gentlemen.
Sure, I don't mind kicking it off. First of all, appreciate everyone coming out, pleased that will sleep deprived for sure, but there was no way I was going to miss this because it was, it was, it was important. Now, has not had the opportunity to do that, very complex. So when we talk about our unhoused population, when we talk about affordable housing, all of that needs to be encompassed, and we must be strategic in what we do across the city. We cannot just say, alright, you know, we're gonna do apartments here, we're gonna do apartments here, in Newport News right now, whether it's fifty or fifty-two percent, that is how many people rent in Newport News right now, and as a council, we have to decide, what is the strategic vision for our housing going forward? Do we want more people that own in Newport News, or do we want to be known as the community that rents way more than people that own in Newport News? But the point is, we have not had that opportunity to deep issue. So, that being said, I, I hear you all, I feel you all, but I cannot support that tonight because I know I have to give our council the opportunity to discuss long-term what housing is going to be. So, that is all that I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
I think next up, we'll go to the other member who's in the district, Councilman Harris.
Yes, I want to share this, and I appreciate everybody who came out on tonight to share their perspective, feedback on this project. I want to say this because the word was mentioned, collaboration, making things happen. I had to attend, but I was grateful for those that were able to attend and grateful for Mr. Keels to conduct, then, conduct that meeting last night. What I came out of it with, because I had a conversation with our Planning Commission Chair, Mr. Michael Taylor, who was first against the project with the plan.
Any further, from City Council?
I do.
Yep.
Um, so, I, I want to say thank you for everyone that came out tonight, I also took all your emails and read it, when I look at applications, I look at the big picture. Most recently, Newport News, we had a housing study, and we created this housing study to look at affordability in City Newport News, to look at the different housing choices that we had available, and to look at what our needs were over the next twenty, thirty years. One thing, I would agree, we didn't need, we do need more apartments, complexes in Newport News, and the reason I say that is, out of the study, it stated that we needed about thirty.
What, what are we saying, progress stops until we start the whole progress again for a comprehensive plan? People need homes, people want to live in Newport News. A lot of my friends said, man, I want to live in Newport, to be honest, there's not too much nice, quality, luxury stuff in Newport News. It's just not. And when Mr. Alvin Keel said, I said, when he talking about the project, he said, yeah, I paid a million dollars for that land. I said, a million dollars? I said, well, I heard different. He sent me the stuff where he paid a million dollars for the land. This man invested, him and Mr. Iverson invested a million dollars in Newport News, going by the comprehensive plan, the R-City hoes. When you're in business, like, you're a businessman, I'm not gonna wait and say, okay, there's another election in, um, two years, there's another election in four years, I can't think about developing because I gotta wait to see what this council's, they said I'm gonna be in this seat, but I'm here, thanks to my mother back there, darling, I'm yours. They didn't think the council would ever look like this, but now it does. We're gonna continue to fight for what's right, I'm gonna continue to fight for this city, whether it pass or don't pass, but when I ran for election, I said I'm gonna run for development of Newport News. I know this city needs. I know this city needs new schools. I know the city needs new, um, technology. I know the city need to invest in our youth. People say we don't want to raise the taxes. Where do you think the, the money gonna come from? I have great pride in this city. We talking about two hundred cars? I look at my, at my apartment complex every day because I'm in the front. And that's three hundred and S out there every three or four minutes. So we got eight, we got three hundred and eight units. We're talking about two hundred, what, a hundred and twenty units? Come on now, we can make things happen. It's all about if we want to make things happen. So I commend you, the, um, developers, I commend the team, I commend everybody who came out here today. If it pass, it Newport News because this is a councilman who wants development. This is a councilman who want to give people opportunities. And I want to see this city continue to thrive. Because we want to build more schools, we want to build more things for our youth. And the only way we're gonna do it is increase our tax backs and welcome businesses to Newport News. And we're gonna make, continue to make our city the best city to live in. Thank you.
There's land use because of the density in that area already. And because the area brought in that planned residential development and brought in the R-five zoning, which is attached housing, even though it doesn't look like it's attached. Uh, we felt that this was a good compromise in between those two.
Okay. Uh, and also to get clarity, I know that the vice mayor had mentioned this. What is our current rental rate in the city of Newport News?
You mean vacancy rate?
No, rental rate, so, uh, renters versus homeowners.
Oh, renters versus homeowners, majority renters. I think, uh, homeowners is a little under fifty percent.
Mm-hmm, okay. Very good. And I do have a question for Mr. Keels. When you say, uh-
Sir, you can come up, sir.
Yeah.
I do not, um, like four-three votes because a four-three vote, I think is what's gonna happen tonight. That, that means that no one is gonna be happy. The last time we had a four-three vote was, I believe, in the North. And we were talking about the joint Chick-fil-A Wawa. Is that, I think that, that's the last time we had a four-three vote.
Correct.
Um, and what I, I will say again what I said back then. As mayor, the way that this, uh, city is drawn up is still topic. I lean toward, hold in probably most of the development that happens in the city. I did not know about this until probably four days ago. That, that's not fair to you, Mr. Keels. Other developers, we would have facilitated, uh, more community discussion and we would have prevented this. We would have known before. So that, that is, that is on us, that, that is our bad. So two things can be true at once. So that, you have, with that, you have my apologies. In my mind, as I, as I close, this comes down to risk tolerance, right? The question is, could this work? Yes. Could it fit? Um, and I think we can work on our- Page three, we'll, we'll, we'll take a minute. If you want to exit, you can leave at this time. Thank you. Just give it to the, the clerk. We'll take about thirty, thirty more seconds, if that's okay? Thank you. No, I appreciate it.
Our Hampton Roads Company now own and operate express car washes throughout Virginia and North Carolina, with a majority of their locations here in Hampton Roads. Green Clean applies what it calls a Disney perfect standard to all of its locations, meaning that it prides itself on providing the highest level of customer service possible and always provides enhanced landscaping when available, which they've done so here. Green Clean also prides itself on being a good community member. The vacuums for this site, for instance, will be free during business hours, and the site was purpose... ...in the building. The Green Clean is excited about the opportunity to repurpose this constrained parcel into a state-of-the-art car wash facility. And Green Clean thinks this is a great location for this project. It's conducted market analysis and studies to show that this location will support a car wash, and it's following a national trend for more car wash facilities. Its location is well-located on a busy corridor, surrounded by commercial uses and other drive-thru uses, and it's not close to any residences. Additionally, as noted in the staff report, the proposed use complies with the city's zoning ordinance requirements and comprehensive plan.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items: Page sixty-six, minutes of the joint work session of February eleventh, twenty twenty-five; Page ninety, minutes of the work session of February eleventh, twenty twenty-five; Page one sixteen, minutes of the regular meeting of February eleventh, twenty twenty-five; Page one thirty-five, resolution in support of Dr. Patricia Woodbury. Motion to approve the consent agenda, item F1 through F4, all-inclusive.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Other City Council actions, next on our agenda, page one thirty-nine, item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Item G1 is a request to approve a resolution adopting the revised Newport News City Council handbook. The handbook serves as a reference guide containing excerpts from the city charter and code of Newport News, the code of Virginia, city policies, and materials provided to elected officials by the Virginia Municipal League. It has been updated to reflect recent revisions. City Council adopts the handbook biennially following elections. It may be amended by a majority vote of the elected council members, except for rules mandated by law. Once adopted, the handbook establishes council policies and procedures in addition to those required by law. I recommend approval.
At this time, I see that we have no speakers. Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry.
Uptown ordinance to amend and reordain City Code, Chapter fifteen, Elections, Article one, Voting Precincts, Section fifteen through forty-nine, absentee voting in person. The General Register proposes establishing a permanent satellite office at the Denby Community Center for use before every election, expanding beyond the two-week period outlined in ordinance number seven nine nine four dash two four. This change enhances voter access, particularly for forty thousand registered voters in the North District, by reducing wait times and balancing the voting population across the city council districts. The new office will promote equal access to early voting and improve overall efficiency. I recommend approval.
I see we have no speakers. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Page one ninety-six, item G3, Mr. Manager.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Page two oh three, item G4, Mr. Manager.
Item G eight zero, Turnberry Boulevard, from the Industrial Development Authority of the city of Newport News, Virginia. City Council has requested to approve the conveyance of a four-point-four-five acre parcel at six-eight-zero Turnberry Boulevard from the Industrial Development Authority. This site is planned for the future fire station, Fire Station's Emergency Response operations. The station's design is underway, consistent with our CIP conversations, and construction is anticipated during the fall of toy maintenance state revenue to the Department of Public Works for residential street reconstruction and resurfacing contracts. The total FY twenty twenty-five allocation from VDOT has increased, and the additional funds will be used for the specified projects. As required, the funds will be recorded in the general fund initially and transferred to the street highway maintenance.
See, we have no speakers. I'm sorry. Motion to approve item H1 and H2.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I just want to say thank you to Owen and that entire team for the Economic Mobility Institute grant. That's a lot of meetings, and that's thirty thousand dollars that we're able to get to accelerate that program. So thanks for all the hard work, Owen.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Citizen comments, item I. I will call each name in the order appears in front of me, citizen comments on matters remained at City Council. Michael McCabe?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, what I'm here tonight is to propose something brand-new for the city of Newport News that will help dramatically improve its finances, specifically a permanent fund. Now, permanent funds are, there are a number of states in the United States, most famous, it's essentially a, it works like retirement. You put money into principal, you never subtract the principal, and the only money you ever spend or utilize is passive interest income. My proposal with the permanent fund is to establish one here for the city of Newport News and use this passive income to help cover the overhead costs.
Carol Karkov?
Thank you. I'm Carol Karkov. Like a, thank you. I'm Carol Karkov. Like a car in the cuff on your pants. I live in Newport News at one ninety-seven Revelle Drive, two-three-six-oh-eight. I've come to make a request again, I think I made it in January. I enjoy as many people that we can get to know what's really going on in our city. So I'm asking, please have each of our city community centers post the city council meetings on their marquees. Most of them have marquees. I've mentioned this before. I live and participate visual place. But I was really disappointed last week when I came to exercise class on Wednesday morning, and the trucks were there to clean up from the Tuesday meeting. I said, oh, what's, what's going on? And when they told me that there was a community meeting today, much anymore at night, my daughter brings me down here, but for our city as a whole to know more about what's going on, I think that's really important. I don't take a newspaper, and honestly, I seldom go online. Please help advertise our meetings. They are important to our local area. And I have one other. I'd like to thank all of you and keep it going for our city three-one-one information telephone. It's really handy to find out when they give, you give to us. God bless and take care and stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
If I could just respond real quick. The next meeting is at Christopher Newport. No, that's not the Denby Community Center, but on March eleventh, if I'm correct.
Yes.
Is it Christopher Newport?
Denby Community Center on a sheet of paper and post when our council meetings are. Is that doable?
That sounds pretty complicated, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Could you please make that happen?
Not tonight.
Thank you, sir.
And just for another point, do we usually put it somewhere aside?
I don't see represented from communications, but I think, I've been taking notes, and certainly you have a motion before you that I'll introduce under new business to take action on moving the next meeting. I can do one better than that. We've, in accordance with council guidance, prepared the rest of the meetings for the entire year, so we can bring those forward. You all can adopt them all at one time, and we can post that schedule at community centers, on social media, on our website. We'll make it very visible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ar...
How you doing, Mayor? Council?
Good evening.
Councilmen and women?
Good evening.
I know if y'all remember me from last year, the pastor, Apostle Pastor, that's inside of St. Paul's Church. And I want to thank y'all for doing a great job with having the churches all come together and taking care of the homeless throughout this winter, which made me shift, and such a good job, it made me shift into prevention. I first want to say that I am now a resident Newport News, because I'm from New York. And now I also am a business owner, because I have an LLC out here, and inside of Newport News. And the thing about the LLC that we have is that we started doing prevention. I, I use that source, so it's kind of, it kind of works. But at the same time, I would just wanted to say that the church is behind it all. And we have to, you know, that's almost a two-hundred-year-old building, and I'm looking to do repairs on it, so we put out permits to try to seamless, then to just jump them into an apartment, because their mindset is not, they're, they're so busy combating with the elements and a different lifestyle. So we have temporary housing where we put people in for a short term, and then transition them from that point to an apartment that allows them to be a better sufficient, you know, a tenant, as opposed to bringing the reckless, having that situation happen. So I hope y'all support what we're doing. If y'all have any ideas or any ways that y'all can work with me in helping the church, because that's where I'm at, and then also the business projects.
You speak. Before you, my name is Jaquana Phillips, and I come before you as a dedicated career advisor, mentor, life skills coach, I mean, many titles, just a proud member of the community. I'm also soon to begin my law school journey, driven by commitment to advocacy and service. I'm here because I believe in the potential of our city and its people, and I believe that we have an opportunity to make a lasting investment in that potential. Today, I'm asking for your support in establishing a comprehensive career center programs for our community. Three, these three initiatives are vital to our, to fostering growth in our community for our well-being in our residents. Together, and strength is our social fabric of our city. Members of the City Council, these initiatives represent an investment in our future. For your time and your service, also, thank y'all for keeping my seat warm, because I want one in the future. Y'all have a good one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is new business. I'll turn it over to the, to Mr. Archer, City Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to extend a sincere appreciation to all of, it's been a long night, for everyone who had a hand and a role in helping this city respond and recover to the winter storm, or snowmageddon, as some of us call it. We, of course, activated a public shelter for the homeless. We're, we're cleared to the best of our ability, and for an average of approximately tangents of snow that fell across Newport News, we were probably kind of in the middle, the, the physical challenges, the physical tests that they meet, with personal best every year from competing. So, so thank you to everyone who will come out and participate, and I'd like to invite everyone to come down on this Sunday. We have the culmination of the marathon. We begin at seven o'clock at Newport News Park, and we probably expect some of the runners to cross the finish line in downtown, and roughly the finish line, you want to be downtown no later than, than, than really than, than nine, nine-thirty, to really take advantage of everything and see the runners, cheer them on as they cross the finish line. The third item that I have for council this evening is I would like to, for council this evening is I would like to, before you, you have a draft resolution to change the location of the March eleventh, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting to the Games Theater at Christopher Newport University, and I recommend approval, and I'd like to request, request a motion from City Council at this time. Thank you.
So moved.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thanks.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thanks. I'm going to push ahead. City Attorney?
Nothing, sir.
City Clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Long?
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight to share some concerns or questions. And this didn't happen in Newport News, but I wanted to offer my condolences to the families of the Virginia Beach officers, Virginia Beach officers that lost their lives in the line of duty. I read in our, in our, lives in the line of duty. I read in a, in an article that talked about how the most dangerous time for police officers during a traffic stop, and made me remember that we had lost an officer too a few years ago behind a traffic stop. So, all the other thing is, good luck to the marathon runners at this weekend. I said I was going to participate in one of the races last year. I said I was going to do it this year. Didn't do it. So I'm just asking for maybe a reminder, a few, a few months out, six months out, to kind of get ready for.
Six years.
But good luck to all the marathon runners, and enjoy this weekend here in the city of Newport News. That's all I have.
Councilman Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. I, I just want to join Councilman Long and here tonight, I, I just want to join Councilman Long in giving my condolences to the Virginia Beach Police Department and the families and friends of Officer Cameron Girvin and Christopher Reese, who lost their lives over the weekend on a traffic stop, and, and while they're protecting the citizens of Virginia Beach. And it does hit close to home, just a few years ago, we had, we had lost an officer, and, you know, it's just always a tough time, not only for the communities, but also for all of our brave men and women who put on the uniform every day, they go back out onto the streets, and also especially for those families who have to, just our thoughts and prayers go out to them. Also, want to give our condolences, my condolences, to the Newport News Public Schools of Rec, planning for a very nice sports and, sports and event center feasibility study presentation. It was a couple weeks ago, but a lot of great information, it was a lot of good engagement. People are pretty excited. I know this is the very first step in seeing if, you know, that that's going to fit here in the city of Newport News, but thank you very much. It's just got everybody really thinking and excited about something happening here in the city. Also want to say congratulations to the newest academy graduates from Newport News Police Department graduation. They had the Warwick High School choir there, the St. National Anthem. We had a young adult police commissioner that was there. They gave an address to the new graduates, was tremendously impactful, and also want to thank the young adult commissioners that came out tonight. Very impressive group of young people. City Council, Councilman Harris, when was your birthday? Is it coming up?
Fifteenth.
The fifteenth of March?
Fifteenth of February.
Oh, I missed it, man. I apologize.
So, happy birthday.
But I also want to wish my son Jacob a happy sixteenth birthday. He is, he'll be turning sixteen this weekend, so I just want to wish that knucklehead a happy birthday. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
So you mentioned everyone's birthday, except your own, which was just yesterday.
Come on, man.
That's crazy.
Councilwoman Vick?
Well, I just want to first to say, as we're talking about children, my beautiful daughter, Tia Shae Vick, is here with me tonight. Thank you so much for coming. And I just really want to thank, me and this guy grew up in the same neighborhood together, and I'm just so honored to be able to say he's our Director of Public Works, Frank James. You all did such a great job. It made me feel so good waking up during the snowstorm to see all the trucks moving all the snow off of my street, and, and to get the calls from citizens that, who were saying, what a great job Newport News has done. So thank you, and I really appreciate you and how well you have represented as the head of Public Works. And that's all I have. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Ely?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I already got the word from, it's good, beside him, he'd be like, no sermon tonight, John. But real quick, I just want to give my condolences to the school system, Michelle Price. She was very inspirational, inspirational when I was on the school board, and to that family, I had the opportunity to, last week, to take them a flower from City Council, as well as give our condolences. So I'm just very sad for them. Also, unfortunately, I lost my, one of my good friends and one of my former employees a couple days ago. She was hit by a drunk driver, thirty-five years old, Tanya Foster. So give my prayers go out to her family. It's been really rough. I've been at City Council. To see so many young men from out, throughout Newport News, get so many life lessons, it was just very impactful. And the young man was just so excited just to learn, learn about real estate, learn about the value of, learn about the value of the dollar, learn about investing. So I think they had over three hundred young men from Newport News high school students participate in that. And the One City Marathon, I am excited about that, but I would not be there on Sunday, that's the marathon. I will be there on Saturday, I think, for the Nautical Mile or something like that. So I'm excited about the marathon, the One City Marathon, and I will try to, next year, every year someone will run the marathon, but I'm going to start training now so I can run the My City Marathon next year, and that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Harris?
Yes, I just want to echo some of the same sentiments and extending my condolences to the Virginia Beach Police Department, and also to Ms. Michelle Price, Teray Price, the Director of the Newport News Public Schools Television. Your family is in my prayers, as you've been, they've been a part of the communications for Newport News Public Schools for years, so much so that I would consider Ms. Price the voice of Newport News. When you ever heard anything regarding Newport News, it was her beautiful voice, so we're going to miss her, and my prayers are extended to her family. And...